Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Monday, October 5th, West Fargo Commission meeting. Would you please join me for a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we start, I would ask that everybody in the room, with the exception of our Chief of Police, to please silence their phones. First order of business is the approval of the agenda as distributed and presented. Commissioners, do you have any additions, questions, changes?
I would make a motion to approve.
Bradley? Commissioner?
Commissioner Jurdavich.
Commissioner Jurdavich made the motion. Commissioner Simmons seconds. Been moved and seconded to approve the order of the agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried. Thank you. Next order of business is Item C, the approval of the minutes of September 21st, 2020. They have been distributed. They are on pages four through seven in the packet.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner George. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Simmons seconds. Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of September 21st, 2020. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Will proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Next order of business is the building permit report. It has been distributed. Is there any additions, questions, comments?
Commissioner Olson, I'll make the motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner George seconds. Been moved and seconded to approve the building permit report. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. I would like the public to know that this evening Commissioner Olson and Commissioner Jurdavich are participating. They are doing it virtually and will be active participants in our meeting, just for the public record. The next order of business is the consent agenda. We have two items, bills which are on pages eight through seventeen. They have been distributed and the financial dashboard as of August 31st, 2020.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner George. Moves to approve the consent agenda as distributed. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Jurdavich seconds. Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as distributed. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on to the regular agenda. Item number one. Is a hearing for any written appeals regarding assessment list confirmed by the Special Assessment Commission for sewer, water, storm, and street improvements, District Number 1305. Mr. Scott, Mr. Shockley.
Thank you, Mr. Commission President. Tonight is a set of hearings for the assessment district lists that were confirmed by the Special Assessment Commission at its final Assessment Commission hearing this year. Technically, if a written appeal has not been filed, you wouldn't be able to hear somebody who just shows up to the meeting. However, I always suggest that if somebody is here for the district, that you would hear whatever objections they have. Thus far, we've only received one written objection, and that is for 2241. But there may be people here for the other districts. I would suggest that if somebody is here for a district, that they would identify their name, the property they own within the district, and the basis for their objection. Keep in mind, if you lower one person's assessment, it can raise everybody else's assessment within the district. Many of these projects were completed prior to the current composition of the city commission, and so a lot of the assessments are just going through the process because sometimes it can take two to three years from the start of the project to the assessment proceeding. So can certainly answer any questions you might have. We have not received any written objections for District 1305.
Thank you for that narrative as to what the process and procedure is. Again, those that were going to give us a written appeal, we're supposed to have that to us by five o'clock today, and so we could get it on the docket. So are there anyone? There are no written appeals for District Number 1305. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Mr. Commissioner Olson, I'll make the motion to confirm the assessment list.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Is there a second, please?
Seconds.
Commissioner Simmons seconds. Been moved and seconded to approve the assessment list confirmed by the Special Assessment Commission for sewer, water, storm, and street improvements for District Number 1305. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item two on the regular agenda is again a 5:30 hearing on any written appeals regarding the assessment list confirmed by the Special Assessment Commission for sanitary sewer, water, and storm sewer improvement District Number 1315. Mr. Shockley, Mr. Scott, do you have any written appeals for these 1315?
No, Mr. Commission President.
Okay. Is there anyone here from 1315 that didn't understand the procedure or process that would like to make a point? All right. Commissioners? Would the motion be approved? Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. Is there a second, please?
Seconds.
Mr. Jurdavich seconds. Been moved and seconded to approve the Special Assessment Commission report for sanitary sewer, water, storm sewer for 1315. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item number three is a hearing of written appeals regarding the assessment list confirmed by the Special Assessment Commission for infrastructure replacement District Number 1319. Mr. Shockley, Mr. Scott, are there any written appeals on 1319?
No, Mr. Commission President.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to 1319? Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Commissioner Jurdavich, I'd make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Jurdavich moves to approve. Commissioner Simmons seconds. Been moved and seconded to approve the assessment list confirmed by the Special Assessment Commission for street improvement District Number 1319. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item number four is a hearing of any written appeals regarding the assessment list confirmed by the Special Assessment Commission for street improvement District Number 2241. Mr. Shockley or Mr. Scott, do we have any written appeals on item number four?
Yes, Mr. Commission President. We received just prior to five, one written objection from Mr. Jim Bullis. I'm not, we obviously haven't had time to look at it. If it is something the Commission is interested in hearing, we could certainly, you'll have to hear the objection. If it needs some time, you can hold the hearing, but just table the decision. It's up to the Commission how you want to handle it.
Would it be proper for us to read the appeal?
I believe Mr. Bullis is here.
I see that Mr. Bullis is here, but...
Present it.
Does the document detail why he's appealing it?
It's very brief. It just, in a nutshell, we don't think the city engineer is fairly assessing the storm and sanitary sewer. The only benefit, it only benefits the lots the city has for sale. So there's not a lot of detail in the appeal, but can certainly, the appellant can certainly come forward and present whatever position he has regarding the matter.
Mr. Bullis, would you step up, please, to the podium? State your name, address, and the piece of property that you're appealing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Jim Bullis. My address is 2118 Sterling Rose Lane in Fargo. I am the representative of the owner of the, on your map, this is page 71 of your agenda. It's a big parcel, kind of salmon color, out of the assessment district. We're, the tentative assessment is $441,000 for this, for this parcel. And specifically, my engineer has reached out, has been, has been discussing what our concern is in more detail. But the, there are two big components of this assessment district that we don't, that really doesn't benefit us at all. One is the storm and one is the sanitary sewer. And not only are we paying our front-footage share, we're paying the bulk of both of these based on, I, I'm not quite sure what, how the unit assessment works, but based on how many people live in ours vis-à-vis how many people would live in the, there's one lot the city owns, and I think Eaglewood or Westwood owns the other one, John? Is that correct?
I'd have to check.
I think that's right. I think you guys have one. I'm a member of Eaglewood as well, and Cheyenneville, so I think we've got the other two in the city as the only other party to this assessment district. So keep in mind, if my assessment goes down, your assessment, Commissioners, will go up. But my, my point of this is, we already built out our lot before the sewer and storm came by on the south side. We didn't get any benefit whatsoever, and we, there was no way we were ever going to benefit from it. It really only goes to these commercial lots that would need sewer in the future. I'd love the opportunity to discuss this a little further with staff if this is something on the table for two weeks and we can try and hammer it out. Otherwise, that's all I can really say about the assessment concerns, so.
Thank you, Mr. Bullis. Why don't you grab a chair? Mr. Scott, would you go through this a little in detail? Please?
Absolutely. Good evening, Commissioner President, members of the Commission. So there is limited information available in your packet. There's additional information on our, on our website, and of course, within our records in the engineering department. Just to describe the project real brief, this was 100% requested by Jim Bullis and the developing group. Basically, the, the request was to take Fifth Street, which previously terminated, if you can see the map here, I'm circling around with the cursor, that, that was the previous end of Fifth Street West. We had a retention pond here that actually extended out towards Cheyenne Street. The request from the developer was specifically to extend Fifth Street, making a connection to Cheyenne, allowing additional access for the property here that they were in the process of developing. It is now developed. And so really, the, I'd have to, I haven't, you know, this is the first time I've heard of, of, that there is a written appeal. I'm certainly open to getting into the specific questions that they have, but the, the project was requested by the developing group, and again, consists of infrastructure that services all three of these parcels. I will have to go back and check. If there's a specific question to how much the sewer costs versus storm sewer versus the street, I can certainly go back and look that up. But in general, some of these things were just inherently needed to extend Fifth Street.
But you don't have that information with you this evening?
Not those exact numbers. No, I don't. Nope, I can just...
Understand, understand.
Without the developer's request, request for these improvements, Fifth Street would have stayed where it was, on the south side of that retention pond. So, but again, if there's a specific, you know, why was the sewer assessed at a certain rate, I'd have to go back and just verify those specific numbers.
Mr. Simmons.
Thank you. So Dustin, you're saying then, from what I'm understanding, that this, this does help the developer, obviously, and, but in a prior project, probably more than in this specific project?
Well, so prior to this project, there was, there was a retention pond sitting here, really. This white shaded area here that you can see extended out to Cheyenne Street. So what the city owned was a one large retention facility. The developer had come forward, asking the city to extend Fifth Street to provide access to this large parcel here, this multifamily residential lot. And in doing so, we reshaped the pond, pulled it back to the west, so now it's completely within this white boundary. The, the rest of the city's lot here, shaded in yellow, is available for development. Now, there was once a large hole there for a pond, so I'm not sure what kind of challenges are going to be presented if and when it were to develop. But that is, if there's, you know, the, the will to develop, it can be built on. And then on the north side, there's a white parcel here. That's the city's lift station, and the blue parcel is another commercial property. So again, the, the nature of the request for this project was 100% to serve this red shaded parcel here. It was meant for that development. That was really the, the nature of the request. The city, until that development was going in, the city had no agenda to extend Fifth Street.
Okay.
So, but again, if, if there was some work done on sanitary sewer and a service extended into these other lots, I'll have to go check exactly, I know there was, but I'll have to check what those costs were and verify that we're comfortable with exactly how that got assessed.
I have a couple questions.
Please, Commissioner George.
Okay, so with, with Mr. Bullis, his company having the bulk of the responsibility of this fairly large project, I assume he knew it was going to cost that before this was done, or not?
Well, we, we had original engineering estimates that were put together. Up until we went through the assessment process, there was really, I don't, I don't know to what level there was an assessment allocation, if you will. You know, so at the beginning of the project, did we say, okay, you're requesting this, but it's going to cost you $400,000?
Right.
We didn't have a specific preliminary assessment like this, but we were certainly communicating to them what the overall project costs were at the beginning of the project. And so I'd have to go back and see specifically what information was provided to whom, and...
I guess then I'd also want to know, was this brought up with the Special Assessment Commission, and if there were any comments from any of those gentlemen on this?
No, no. We, during the Special Assessment Commission review meeting, where they reviewed and approved the assessments, and then there was the Special Assessment Public Hearing, there were no questions or comments within those two meetings. My, the first time I heard that there was a concern from the developer was actually through a consultant at Moore Engineering. Had, had mentioned that a representative of the developer had, had asked questions of Moore Engineering because, of course, they were involved with the project as well. So I had heard through Moore that, that there were questions, but until this particular appeal, I, I, I don't, I haven't seen specific questions.
So, so basically, to kind of simplify this, this is a project that's going to benefit Mr. Bullis. He maybe didn't know the exact amount, but was aware it was happening. Is that the gist of it?
Well, very aware that it was happening. They, they requested that we do this. Yep. So again, without their petition to have this road extended, we would not have filled in the pond and built the road over it.
May I make a suggestion? Mr. Bullis requested the possibility of sitting down with staff and, again, go through the numbers as to whether, you know, square footage or linear footage and things like that. That's a reasonable request, in my opinion. Commissioners?
Is that, is that something we could do at this point? Do we, do we...
Just so he understands the numbers. We're not, we're not making any decisions about adjusting anything. But, so he understands how those calculations were made. Obviously, the request was made and petition was made by his firm, so it is what it is. But I think that there's a question with regard to the city-owned property and what, what our assessment is.
It's not reasonable to me. I'm certainly willing to sit down and, just for transparency's sake, here's the, here's the spreadsheet. Can certainly sit down and review this in detail with Mr. Bullis and his representatives and answer the questions that they have. As far as what the administrative process is, I'd defer that to John or Tina.
Mr. Shockley?
Thank you, Mr. Commission President. You, you could, you have to hold the hearing tonight, and if you wanted to defer making a final decision till after Dustin meets with the developer, you could certainly do that.
Till the next meeting?
Till the next meeting.
I'd make that motion, Mayor, that we...
I'll second that.
Commissioner Simmons moves to defer this till the next meeting. Mr. George seconds. Is there any further discussion?
I just have one question. Commissioner Olson does?
Please, Commissioner Olson.
Fifth Street, does that actually connect into that development that's in question? Because on the map that we see here, we can't tell if it actually does. So does it, does the street actually connect into that development?
Yes, it does, Commissioner Olson. Yes.
It does. Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Scott. Thank you, Mr. Shockley. Thank you, Mr. Bullis. Item number five is a hearing on the written appeals regarding assessment list confirmed by the Special Assessment Commission for street improvement District Number 2243. Mr. Shockley, Mr. Scott, do we have any written appeals for 2243?
None, Mr. Commission President.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to special street improvement District Number 2243?
Yes, I would.
Please step to the microphone. Introduce yourself. Tell us your address.
Steve Markworth, 725 15th Avenue East. Mine go basically 2243, 2444. They're both of them because they're saying that it affects Charleswood, and so I don't know how you want to do that, but I guess I'll speak as one, and we can go from there as far as, as what's there. So I was under the, understanding that there had to be a written appeal. I've been to the city, to the specials meeting. I've been to this meeting before, and no one said you had a written appeal. So they said show up on October 5th. That's why I'm here right now. Okay? So what I'm looking at is, as far as the specials are here, is, is how this, in Charleswood, basically between Ninth, or 13th Avenue on the north side, Beaton on the south, Ninth Street on the east, Cheyenne on the west. From what I've understood and been in these meetings before, is that people weren't doubly assessed for projects. For instance, people north of Seventh Avenue didn't get charged for 13th Avenue because they got charged for Main. Okay? Well, in that situation, we got charged for Ninth and 13th, and Cheyenne from 13th to Beaton. So we've got charged twice. Others didn't because we had this wonderful little rule there. Okay? Also within a half mile. I am a little over six tenths of a mile from Cheyenne to my house, 725 15th Avenue East. Okay? So with that in mind, I'm just trying to figure out where this is going. All right? As I said, Charleswood is being assessed. Not just me, but the entire Charleswood District is being assessed for both projects. As I said before at these meetings, these are major artillery routes, and we should see, really, I'd like to know the percentage of people that are actually in Charleswood that are benefiting from these. Because I'll tell you what, we've basically got a couple outs on there. You've got 17th Avenue, east and west, that goes through. You've got 15th Avenue, that's almost impossible to take a left turn on and head north on Ninth. And then we've got Sixth Street, Eighth Street, and First Avenue, which are 13th Avenue that come up. And then 14th Avenue, right by the Cheyenne crossings, has a little exit there that goes on to Cheyenne. So there's not a lot of things that are coming out of, 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 of that area, but are being used by a ton of other people. Okay? So that's what I'm looking for in these types of situations. I know that money's tight. Once again, I hear that you guys weren't always on this. Not all of you were here when they started to put these things together. But there's been, and still is, a great deal of money right now that's being wasted on the projects, as I see it, that aren't being taken care of. For instance, that's the lights project. My understanding that the city of West Fargo has ownership in that and is paying $200,000 per year of other things going on with it. Well, could that $200,000 be used at a better spot? And I think that's, you guys would have to look at that and say, wait a minute, what are we doing here? You know, you don't have an open checkbook. If you guys are writing the bill, hey, go for it. Do anything you want. When it's coming out of my pocket, I think that's a whole different story. Okay? That's the things I, I'm looking at. I just want to know basically when it's going to stop. Where's it going to be there?
Mr. Markert, we have to stay on task to the, to the issue of the written, your protest of 2243.
2243, 44, both of them. I guess I would be looking at it.
I'll make a comment. I think you're right. When I looked at those, I have issues with five, six, and seven, because they all deal with arterials, and I disagree with how the Special Assessment District is brought up. I wasn't part of that in the first place, but you're 100% right, especially with five and six. Charleswood's getting hit for both of those. And my opinion is Charleswood either needs to be split in half, and half pays for one, and half pays for the other, or honestly, with all three of those, I think everybody north of the interstate should be paying part of it because they're all arterials. So I don't like how they're divided up.
Commissioner George? Thank you, Mayor. When, when Steve is done, why don't we listen to our staff and see why we're doing that? Get a better explanation of why, why we're doing that, before we jump to conclusions and say the north side should pay for the south side and vice versa.
What is...
These are all north side projects, so that's why I say everybody north of the interstate drives on all, all three of those arterials.
All right. Mr. Markert, you have the...
What is 2251? I'm not aware of that. I just knew those two were mine. Where's 2251?
That's 13th Avenue.
13th Avenue?
Yep. And Charleswood is not part of that one. It's kind of ridiculously how far south it goes, but I think it's to avoid Charleswood paying for a third one, so.
Well, that's what I have to say. I know there's other people here that...
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Markert. Is there anyone that would like to speak to 2243, Street Improvement District?
I...
Mr. Scott, would you step to the podium, please, or...
My name is Morrell Matson. I've lived at 738 15th Avenue East for, I think, 23 years. You know, I, this is, so much of this is just way over my head, but from my understanding of this particular item, you know, we're, we're paying such a large portion of, of these costs, and I don't see the benefit for the residents in our area. Like Steve was saying, you know, I think if there was an accurate survey done of the actual traffic going up and down Ninth Street there, you know, 99% of that traffic doesn't live in that area that's, that's paying the bill. Has my quality of life improved since that, that road's been developed? Not at all. In fact, it's prob, it's, it's the opposite. My quality of life is lessened by it. Sure, do I use it? Absolutely. Was it needed? Absolutely. I mean, it's, you count the cars there, like Steve said, you try and make a left turn on, on there, it's just impossible. You just forget it and find a circle route to, to do it. But, you know, that whole road is, is an art. It's a gateway to the malls. It's a gateway to the hospital and Costco, and there, there's so much commercial, it's the commercial people, I think, should be picking up much more of the tab on this because they're the ones that are getting all the benefit. The, the people that are on that road are either shoppers going to or coming from, or employees that work in that area that are coming in from Moorhead or Fargo or wherever. So I just think it's really unfair that we're paying as much as we are. I wish I, wish I had my written appeal in. I wish a lot of things. I, I wish I was more intelligent about makings of all of this, but, you know, I'm just a, I'm just a dummy resident, so.
No. We thank you very much for coming in. Thank you for your opinion. Mr. Scott, Mr. Shockley, would you like to, excuse me? There's another gentleman here that... Is this on 2243? Yes, sir? Okay? Great. Name and address, please.
My name is Dale Olson, and my wife Teresa's with me. Twelve years ago, we moved from Minot, and we bought a condo in Heatherwood Court. And we were worried about that bridge that was being, in the process of being built over the interstate, 94. over the interstate, 94. And we thought we would get a special assessment on that. Didn't happen. We were told that, since it was a federal project, don't worry, you will not be assessed. And we were not assessed. This has come totally by surprise to me, and we've had a lot of people in our area in Heatherwood Court questioning why this one mile by one mile square is being assessed, and everybody's being assessed, and I heard the number, $4,000. Well, this project started in, what, 2017? And I'm sure there was something in the paper about potential assessments, but of course, I, that's the last thing I was worried about. But just like these two gentlemen that were before me, I'm, I'm questioning how you, what is the rule for having a one-mile square being assessed $4,000 apiece when, when you look at that traffic on Ninth, which they have capably described, and on Cheyenne? We use it, we use it a lot, but people to the east use it, I'm sure, just as much as... So, that's my question. This is new to me. I'm not used to city commissions, and I know it's a tough job. It's something we definitely need it, but I guess I just want a definite, concrete answer as to how you came up with, you know, this formula.
Thank you, Mr. Olson.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate you being here. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to 2243? Mr. Scott, Mr. Shockley, we could respond to any of the questions with regarding to this. Mrs. Fisk?
President Dardis and Commissioners, the, the process being used for these special assessments is, is something that is confirmed by the city commission and then followed by the Special Assessment Committee when they're, when they're spreading special assessments for projects. This has been a longstanding policy that the city has always used, because everybody uses a lot of roads, and so we've got to try, find a way to, to create the best, fairest way to do things. But the, the crux of the matter is that when this was constructed and spread, they were following the policy that was approved by the city commission.
In 2016, that policy that you're referring to?
Yes. And it has not been amended yet. Now, it can be amended, but what we've got is a project now that is operating under those policies. And if you want to create a new policy, that would be for a future assessment. We can't go back, because the Special Assessment Committee was using the policies set, set by the commission in 2016 to bring this forward.
So, my...
I have a questioner.
Commissioner George, maybe.
What, can, can you give the 30-second elevator speech as to what exactly that policy is, Tina?
I'll let Dustin explain that one, please.
That was the same question that Commissioner George just asked, is, is if we could read the, the dialogue in how we, for arterials and the distances. This policy was established in 2016, and again, the city commission can modify that policy. It's been a, it's a four-year-old longstanding policy. Mr. Scott?
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. Well, not, not the split hairs, but there's, when we create a district, there isn't necessarily a policy that says it has to be one mile each way, or it has to be a half mile each way. Each district is unique in that, depending on what the improvements are consisting of, we might go a little further. You know, so for example, for Main Avenue, the boundary, the boundaries were the railroad tracks to the north, which is on a diagonal, so there is no, I mean, it varies whether or not that's a half mile to, so the distance is really not a factor there. And then we did go a half a mile south of Main Avenue, down to Seventh. And, and so, if, if anything, what our policies also do include, so there's a written policy that was adopted in 2016, and that, that talks about if there's an arterial roadway, we're generally going to spread it on an equivalent unit basis. But that particular policy, there is not language in there that necessarily says it's an arterial road, so you have to go a certain distance each way.
Would you explain to the, the participants equivalent parcel?
Sure. So, when we, when we're talking an equivalent unit, we generally use, an equivalent unit is the same as 10,000 square feet that, this was set years and years ago, where the thought process was that an average, single-family residential home is on a quarter-acre parcel, roughly 10,000 square feet. And so, for large projects like this, instead of spreading, in, in certain cases, we spread based on, on the front foot of a property or a square foot, large arterial roadways, we assess on an equivalent unit. So, if a property, a commercial property has four acres, it's generally going to have 18 equivalent units, based on one unit is 10,000 square feet. So, when it comes to the arterial roads, one thing we have tried to do is stay consistent with, and, and like a couple of these comments have been, on the north side, anyway, with, with Main Avenue, 12th Avenue, we did try to create boundaries so that residents weren't paying for two of them versus the one. And that worked. If, if I were to bring up a map, I could show you where, where that, that works for those particular, those two arterial roads. We were able to establish those boundaries accordingly. If I were to pull up a map here, and I don't know, there we go, just to help along with the conversation, but that, again, that's not, that, that wasn't necessarily a rigid policy that was adopted, that everybody is only going to get one street improvement as far as a, a district. What we have tried to do is look back to where those prior districts have been created, and really try to be consistent with who's already been paying, and not only that, but also, what, what were those projects costing in terms of, you know, has it been $1,000 per single-family unit, or has it been $5,000? So, when it comes to 2243, the district at hand, there's a couple of differences between reconstructing an intersection versus one mile of Main Avenue. One mile of Main Avenue, where you're applying, you know, a north boundary and a south boundary, that's a little bit more unique than if we were to go tackle, like in this case, again, it's a, it's an intersection. And so, that's why the boundary, if you go any distance away, it, it's difficult to, to say it's a half mile this way and half mile that way, and, but more specifically, when we did bring this district to the commission at that time, we did look at, what happens if we stay similar with, with Main and 12th? It kind of did get equal to that, that half mile each way. Well, if we stop at a half mile each way with, with Ninth and 13th, specifically with 13th, we're going to stop at 17th Avenue. The properties that are south then of 17th, at which time would they ever pay for an east-west arterial? So, if you're looking at the map here, in 17th, if we were to have cut this off at 17th Avenue, properties that are south of that, when would they pay for an east-west arterial? There isn't one. The conversation gets similar when you go towards the north side of town. When you're, when you're looking at the north and south arterials, it gets to be a little challenging now, signing, and it's not to say that this isn't something worth exploring, and as Tina mentioned, this is certainly a policy discussion that we want to have in the future. We can always be changing things, but when you start looking at, between Center and Ninth, and we divide a line right down the middle, and say, okay, now, these properties are going to pay for Ninth, and these properties are going to pay for Center, there gets to be, well, a couple of things happen. One, when you do one of those particular projects, having fewer properties in that district, it will increase the cost. So, where you might be in two districts, you might be paying a lower assessment for those two, versus if you were just in one, the cost per unit would certainly increase. There's another factor of reconstructing a, a Center Street will look different than reconstructing a Ninth. And so, if we did start assigning just one arterial road to a particular property, we aren't going to avoid a, a question of why was Ninth more expensive than a Cheyenne? Or why was Main Avenue more expensive than a 13th? And so, again, these are policy things, I think, that certainly need to, to move forward, that we certainly want to discuss. But again, the, with the question at hand of, where did it say that we had to draw the boundary the way we did for 2243 in that policy? You're not going to find that in that policy. It doesn't dictate the boundaries for specific districts. So, but, I'm going to go back to the, the material that's in the agenda packet.
I just want to say quick, four out of the five of us did not approve this, did not approve the policy, did not approve this district. It's our jobs to question the system, the staff, the city staff's not our boss, the elected, or the public is our boss, and the public is telling us they don't like this. They don't like how it's being done. And it is our choice as a commissioner to vote for it or to vote against it. I don't agree with it. I, I think it needs to be gone back and looked at, the district, because I don't think it's fair either. And as Commissioners, that's our choice, because that's who we answer to, is the public.
Mr. Mayor?
Absolutely. Nope, absolutely. And if I could, I just, I'd like to walk through a couple other items in here, the total project cost. We did have some city...
Mr. Shockley? Thank you, Mr. Commissioner President. In this part of the process, you're not able to adjust the boundary extent of the boundary, so you have to work within the boundary. The boundary gets started at the beginning of the improvement district process, so whatever adjustments you make, if you raise or lower, it's all the properties within the district.
I understand that, and the point I wanted to make was, the, the policy dialogue that's involved in it, a number of the folks that spoke this evening didn't understand it. And I just wanted to give them some clarifying or some working knowledge as to how this has arrived at. Obviously, as you said, intersections are different than sections of road, so we've heard from Commissioner George that we're going to take a look at this assessment. So, I'll say this to the public, we're going to have future discussions. We can't modify the boundaries this evening. We can't. There's a process and a procedure that's set forth by the North Dakota Century Code, and our city, we can't do that. So, for you to come in and protest, that's fine. We now understand your thoughts and your concerns about how things overlap, and then that is incumbent now on the city commission to address that. So, again, there's nothing we can do with the boundaries that have been set forth prior to this evening. I just want you all to understand, we want to be honest with you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please. Commissioner George.
So, Dustin, just to, and maybe I'm just restating what Mr. Markhart said, but, you know, kind of based off the email I had sent to you earlier today, you know, my understanding is if you live west of Cheyenne Street, or if you were to live east of Ninth Street, in comparison to Charleswood, you, over a long period of time, would pay more in assessments, because when you're in Charleswood, you're paying for multiple north-south arterial roadways. That is a true statement, correct? Based off our current methodology?
I'm not sure I'm following the question here, so...
Because you're north-south or north...
It's the exact same example I sent you in email today. If I lived, you know, west of Cheyenne Street, and I, I realize that, that this, my question gets a little out of the boundaries here, but it's just to get at the methodology, and to understand that, I realize we can't extend those boundaries. I think we could, we could decrease them, but we couldn't extend them. If, if I lived west of Cheyenne Street, or east of Ninth Street, in those cases, I would only be on one, I would only ever be paying for one north-south arterial roadway. But if I live in Charleswood, based off our methodology, these people are typically paying for multiple north-south arterial roadways, correct?
Yes, that, that's, that's correct. Yes.
Okay.
And that's where, so again, the, the example I was trying to provide earlier was, if, if we bisect Charleswood, and, and, you know, if I zoom in here, if, I'm not sure exactly which road, but if we...
I understand your point there. I mean, I don't think the question is how far south it goes. I think we have flexibility there, I understand the point, but we also are, are using, you know, we have solved the problem as it relates to Main and 13th, because we cut people off at Seven. But as it relates to Charleswood, we haven't provided that same, I mean, I realize there isn't a roadway there that perfectly dissects Charleswood north or east to west. But we are, I mean, if you look at a 20- or 30-year period of time, living in Charleswood is not optimal from an assessment perspective, even though those people, on average, probably use those arterial roadways in the same volume or quantity as if I lived east of Ninth or west of Cheyenne. It is a problem. I agree with Mandy and with Mr. Markhart. Sorry, Commissioner George.
Thank you, Commissioner George. Commissioner Simmons?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I've been here a long time, you all know that, so, and we made more changes than just 2016. In prior years, we tried to kind of fix and amend it to, 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 not only, you know, try to help the citizens, but also, you've got to remember the city has a budget, we've got to pay for it, which is you. I live on the east side. I got nailed, you were talking about $4,000, I got nailed $4,200 for that. You know, that's what I got nailed. So, what I'm saying is that we all, we all pay, just depending upon what project, what has to be done. And I know that the staff put in part of that, is depending upon what you're assessed or what they're doing, we will put in more money, or less money, or more funding. So, there is some theology to what we're doing. The other thing I want to, I want to really point out, because people don't think about this that much, because I hear a lot about it, and you're right. And first of all, I'll say this right away, okay? If, if, if we can make it better, let's do it. I'm all for that. If we need to change it, let's change it. The problem is, is I want to be cautious to what we change it to, because we've changed it over the years, like I mentioned, and it's never getting right. Here's for an example, we talk about the south side and what's going on. About three years ago, the north side did a big project down, it was $45 million. Nobody from the south wanted to pay for that. The north wanted the south to pay for it, of course, right? Just like everybody else. The south side, two years ago, $70 million. The south side wanted the north side to pay for that. The north side didn't want to. So, what I'm saying is, we all have the bill. You know, and, and, and years ago, our forefathers, we should say, if they would have had just said, okay, this is what it costs so much, it doesn't matter what side you live on, east, west, north, south, you pay for everything that's being done. Maybe that would have been a little fair? The problem is, we can't go back to that today. We can't do that because of what's, what's been done in the past. So, we can't do that. So, we are trying to do the best that we can, and we will continue to do it, and we'll listen to you, and we will have the meetings, and if there's a better way, by God, let's do it. But let's have those meetings first before we make some, you know, quick judgments here, what to and what not to do. That's all I'm asking. Let's, let's look at everybody's side of you, not just where you folks live, or where I live, or where Mandy lives, or what have you, but try to think of everybody's side, because at the end of the day, it is one pot, it's, you know, it's, the city's got to move forward. We can't stop water and sewer. We got to have it. You mentioned yourself, we needed that road, it was great. It's the question, should we all pay? Or how do we, how do we do it in a fair way, right? And that's all I want to say now, is let's just work on it and try to get it fair for everybody. Thank you.
Mr. Scott, do you have anything else to add?
No, again, I certainly welcome change. I, I hope we move forward with it.
Anything additional?
I would just note that, just so for clarity, you can't, in this part of the process, you can't change the boundaries of the district. As you know, those are started, those boundaries are set when you create the improvement district. So, you can't change the boundaries. You need to operate within the boundaries, which results in, if you decrease someone's assessment, you raise somebody else's. I would note, the city did put some additional money in, into these projects. There's about 1.7 million from North Dakota DOT, and 750,000 from the city was put into the project. So, the city did attempt to buy down the assessments. I can certainly answer any questions you have, but you're, you're stuck with what the boundaries are. You can't, there was a question when we had large task force meetings about special assessments, there is a case in, from the North Dakota Supreme Court, you just... there is a case in, from the North Dakota Supreme Court, you just can't do a citywide assessment for a street project, and so that's where the engineer comes up with figuring out what the improvement district size should look like. Of course, you can have discussions about what the policy should, but those are really at the beginning of the project, when the engineer provides the report, what should the district look like?
Mayor, I'm sorry, could I make just one quick comment? Because, thank you, John, for bringing up those special assessment meetings, because that was a huge theme, everybody wanted to have them, I think we had seven or something? And can we all agree that by the time we were done with those meetings, as a staff, and I was part of every one of them, that once we explained to the citizens how it was done, that they actually understood it? Did they not? They didn't like it, but I mean, they understood what we were saying, they understood the process. Now, this is a little different, because we've got to get into the details about, you know, who and who shouldn't, but they understood the process, they thought it was a fair process. That's what I took from that meeting.
Just--
Who's Commissioner online, who'd like to speak?
Eric. Did you mean, Mr. Mayor? One, one thing on top of that, though, Mark, I mean, what, my biggest takeaway from those meetings is that people expected an extreme focus on sort of fairness or equity in those assessments. And this is an example, which, you know, and the next district as well, where if you're living in Charleswood over a period of time, you are being asked to pay for a larger share of improvements on the north side of town than if you live east or west of Charleswood.
Well, if I may add something, I live in Eagle Run, and I'm being hit with Cheyenne Street, 32nd and 40th Avenue. So you could say that to just about everybody down south of Interstate. We're going to get hit with all of them. And it's all location, location, location. Am I happy about it? No. Do I accept it? Yes. I utilize all the streets in West Fargo. We all have to pay for them. We are limited, like Mr. Shockley said, by the state and how large the assessment district is for street improvements. So we, this is, I think, is the fairest way we can do it, is set up a, a boundary such as this. So that's all I want to say is, I'm getting hit too. I'm getting hit three, four times.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Is there any other Commissioner that has anything to add to the discussion on item number 20, item number five, District number 2243? What is your pleasure, Commissioners?
I'll make a motion to move forward.
Commissioner Simmons moves to approve the Special Assessment Commission's report on Street Improvement District number 2243. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Olson seconds, been moved and seconded to approve the written appeals and assessment list for Special Assessment Commission for Street Improvement District number 2243. Is there any further discussion?
I have one quick question for Mr. Shockley.
Commissioner Jurdewig, could you just speak up a little bit, please?
Sorry, I have one quick question for Mr. Shockley.
Certainly, you're on, you have the floor.
And that would be the appropriateness of voting against an assessment district that I live in, which has nothing to do with the fact I live there, but I, because my argument would actually probably give me a larger portion of it.
If, if any of us live in any of these districts, is it appropriate to vote on it?
So, it, great question, so the question presented is, if you live in an assessment district, is it a conflict to vote on it? If, as long as you have not presented a written appeal, or presented an objection, or an argument before the Special Assessment Commission, it is not a conflict to vote on an assessment one way or another if you live in the district. However, if you hit that second prong of presenting an argument in front of the Special Assessment Commission, or if somebody decided they wanted to appeal their assessment, that is clearly a conflict, and you could not vote on it. But you're, you're fine voting however you want to vote.
I'll just say, on one of these, the way I'm going to vote, it's actually going to cause my personal one to go up, so, let's put it that way.
All right. We have a motion and a second on item number five, Street Improvement District 2243. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries on a three to two vote. Item number six, is a hearing of written appeals regarding assessment list confirmed by the Special Assessment Commission for Street Improvement District 2243. Mr. Shockley or Mr. Scott, do we have any written appeals for 2244?
Uh, Mr. Commission President, we have not received any written appeals, but there may be somebody in the audience that would like to present their appeal in 2244, and it's important to, each appeal should just be within that district, just for the record.
Very good, sir. Is there anyone that would like to speak to Special Improvement District 2244?
I will.
Mr. Scott, please come to the microphone. We want the public to hear your comments to Mr. Markort.
Steve Markort, 725 15th Avenue East. So just what I said on 2243, it's going back to this one. Couple things, I guess, as you mentioned, it started in 2016. I don't think it was until a year ago that we finally got the final number that we're going to be that four grand.
That's correct, yes.
So, for all this time, we don't know what we're going to get charged. I think that's one part of it right there, okay? And the other part, we talked about being fair, whatever, you know, the other part about that is what, what's, I hate the word fair, because what's popular isn't always right, and what's right isn't always popular. And I think that's what comes down to this very same thing, that says, wait a minute, why am I getting hit for both these sides? That's what I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to item number 2244, Street Improvement Anyone at all? Ministers, do you have any questions of staff on 2244? Item number six.
I have, I have one minute.
Commissioner Simmons?
Thank you. Dustin, how much did the city put in on this one? I'm not really, you know--
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. I'm going to zoom into that information right now, if you can see it on, on the screen here. The city did contribute $1,050,000.
Okay.
The total project cost was $8,425,000.
So just for, so I make sure that, as I spoke earlier, I'm understanding this right, and Tina, you can probably help here, but that $1,050,000, that takes into account the, that they've got hit again, I mean, do we take that all into account when we look at these and say, wow, they've been hit twice, that's why you get this much? Like, the last one was 750. I mean, that's kind of the purpose of doing that, right? To try to, at least, I know Steve doesn't like this fair, but I still like that word, to try to--
Commissioner Simmons and rest of the commission, what we have used as a standard is, we always are going kind of off a million a mile, and then if there's any extra items that we feel should not have to be covered by the citizens, we, we put that in there too for the commission, to request that the commission cover that portion. So in this case, it was, the $1,050 was approximately, because it was a mile, the other one was because of approximately three-quarters of a mile that was worked on.
Okay.
There's more policy discussion we have coming forward on allocation of sales tax, infrastructure sales tax, but that is the policy that we've been using to date.
And that, that $1,050,000 comes from sales tax?
Infrastructure sales tax, yes.
I have a comment on, on this district, I know we legally cannot change the boundaries now, but just have to ask, for those of you who set this up in the first place, so this is Cheyenne Street, and the boundary goes all the way over to Ninth Street, but yet directly north, people literally across the street are not in the district. I don't, I don't get it. I was about to say that.
That's a great question.
Where do you draw the line, I guess?
Yeah--
But it's people literally across the street versus a mile away.
Absolutely, Commissioner George. So, in this case, so the, the project terminates at Thirteenth Avenue, so that's why the district also terminates at, at Thirteenth Avenue, so that the next time, when we improve Thirteenth Avenue to the north of Thirteenth Avenue, so between, say, Main and, and Thirteenth, the district boundary will start at Thirteenth and go up to Main. So we generally will, will kind of use the, the project bound, or the, the project limits, if you will. Not in every case, so, again, that's why, like, the intersection project that we discussed before, a little bit different scenario, but in this case, Cheyenne Street here, so from Thirteenth down to Beaton, the, we didn't go on the other side of Thirteenth, because, again, back to the historical way things were done, the next time we do Cheyenne Street, we will not include people to the south. But, again, those are all policy things that are certainly open, open to discussion in the, in the future.
I just have a comment on the, at the 15th--
Steve, Steve, don't do it from the gallery, if you're going to come up, come up here.
Aye. Once again, Steve Markort, 725 15th Avenue East. At the intersection of Ninth and Thirteenth, they did expand north of Thirteenth to the high school. Was that all on that project for the south? So no one then, on the north, even though they're on the north side, didn't get charged?
Question. So, the answer is, the, the district did go up to Seventh Avenue, with that one. So yes, the people north of Thirteenth, basically between Seventh and Thirteenth, there were properties in that district to help pay for that.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
There was a question on communication, in terms of when, when was the public made aware of what the assessments could be? In the staff report here, I did mention that there were several public input meetings held. I, I'd have to confirm the actual date, but I believe it was in 2017 when we started publishing a rough estimate. It was a range of $2,500 to $4,000 per single-family household. If I want to go off memory, I can certainly confirm that, but that was as far back as 2017 when we started publishing a particular estimate like that, specifically for this project.
In today's world, if this project was being initiated today, would these people be contacted any differently than they were in 2017? Made aware of potential assessments? Other than from the communications or webs, our website, or they could type in their address, and they'd have pending assessments once we know the estimates, right?
Right. Based on the--
Is there any written things in today? If this was going to be initiated today, would they receive any written? That's the difference.
Correct, yes, so--
I want you, as a public, to know that.
Absolutely.
That's the difference.
That's one of the policy--
That this commission has made.
Correct. That is very correct. Which is, if I, correct if I'm wrong, but I believe that's at the time of an engineer's report, our policy that we adopted after the task force meetings were to send a written notice after the engineer's report.
Yes, sir. I just wanted the public to be aware of that. That change has been made to try and be more transparent and, and communicate to the public. Again, we're on 2244. Any other discussion?
I will just simply add that I kind of have the same issue with this one as we did, or I did with 2243.
Mr. Jurdewig, would you restate that a little closer to the microphone?
I, I will just simply say I have the same issue with this assessment district as I did with 2243. I think Charleswood is, by virtue of how we're computing these, is paying a larger portion than they should, or, for more assessments over time than they should.
Okay, Mr. Shockley, in case this vote goes differently, if the commission does not accept this, what, what's the procedure?
Well, you, you've, you've spent the money, so you've got to figure out a way to assess it. If you don't approve it, technically, you're only supposed to be dealing with any written appeals, you don't have that tonight. If you don't confirm the, the list, then we would need directions to go back to the Special Assessment Commission. It's not, it's not going to change the boundaries of the assessment district. The Assessment Commission would take another run at it. I suspect that they might play around with numbers a little bit, but you're, you're playing with the same, you know, overall amount of cost in the same-sized district. It sort of becomes a mathematical exercise, they might get some adjustments one way or another, but--
Thank you for clarifying for the public. Again, we're on the, the assessment list confirmed by the Special Assessment Commission for the Street Improvement District of 2244. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I'll make the motion to approve the assessment list in the package.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Simmons, second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the list of the Special Assessment Commission for the Street Improvement District of 2244. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries on a three to two vote. Thank you. Item number seven, is a hearing for written appeals regarding the assessment list confirmed by the Special Assessment Commission for Street Improvement District 2251. Is there any written appeals, Mr. Scott or Mr. Shockley, on 2251?
None, Mr. President.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to 2251? Special Assessment District 2251. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Jurdewig, second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the Street Improvement District 2251. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries on a four to one vote. Item number eight, is a hearing on the written appeals regarding assessment list confirmed by the Special Assessment Commission for Street Improvement District number 2253. Mr. Shockley or Mr. Scott, are there any written appeals for 2253?
We haven't received any, Mr. Commission President.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to Special Assessment District Hearing none. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Simmons moves to approve the Special Assessment Commission's recommendation for a Street Improvement District 2253. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Jurdewig?
Oh, Olson.
Commissioner Olson. It's hard to tell you two apart on virtual. So Commissioner Olson, second. It's been moved and seconded to approve 2253. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on a five-o's vote. Item number nine, is to review the bids and award a contract for project number 1316, Phase One, North Side Sanitary Sewer Rehab. Mr. Scott?
Thank you again, Commissioner President and members of the commission. In your staff, or in your agenda packet here, you have a staff summary of this project, where basically go over, the intent of this is to start investigating our, our large gravity sewer system on the north side of town. An engineer's report was presented back in August, where we outlined there were going to be two phases to this project. The first phase here, we're going to really focus on getting in here and doing some specialized investigating of some of the large concrete structures, the manholes. Getting down to the, to the end here, the, basically, the revised estimate was prepared at the time the bids were advertised for. That estimate was $395,000. We did open bids, and only had one bidder, however, their bid was relatively close to that engineer's estimate, and at this point, staff is recommending awarding a contract to Key Contracting for their base bid plus the alternate one bid, for a total of $416,350. With that, I would answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Scott regarding project number 1316, the North Side Sanitary Sewer Rehab?
Dustin, this is Commissioner Olson. Can you just explain the difference between the Phase One engineer's estimate of 395 and, and their, the bid of their base bid plus an alternate one-- and, and their, the bid of a, their base bid plus an alternate one bid? Why do we have two different types of bids there?
Yes, Commissioner Olson, let me go right down to the, the bid itself here. Um, I hope you can see this on your screen. So with certain projects, uh, where we're not certain on, on whether or not we wanna proceed with a portion of work, in this case, this portion of work is titled, underneath you'll see a heading there, alternate one. There's a portion of work titled Emergency Manhole Replacement On Call. Uh, this is basically to have a contractor on call for eight months with specialized equipment to be able to dig about 40 feet deep to replace one of these concrete structures if it were to fail, uh, during the course of this project. And the reason why we bid this as an alternate is we wanted to get an actual price before moving forward with a recommendation on whether or not to, um, award a contract with that particular scope of work. So, for example, in, in this case, if, if their, uh, quote would have been, you know, uh, I don't know what that threshold would have been, to be honest with you, but let's just, for argument's sake, say they wanted $10,000 a month for this and that equated to $80,000, we would have internally talked that over with, um, staff and, and just, uh, decide, or, we might, we might have decided to go on a different route and not award that project, whereas the items within the base bid are, uh, items that we were certainly gonna be moving forward with. So, I hope that, does that answer your question, Commissioner Olson?
Yes, it does. I just didn't know what the alternative bid consisted of, but you explained it very well. It's just to have that emergency, uh, person on call in case there was ever a disaster there. Very good. Thank you.
Any additional questions on project number 1316? What's your pleasure, Commissioners?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner George. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Who was on the, uh?
Commissioner Jurdavich.
Thank you, Commissioner Jurdavich. It's been moved, Commissioner George moved, Commissioner Jurdavich, second. The approval of, uh, award the contract for project 1316, the North Side Sanitary Sewer Rehab. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item number 10 is to review the bids and award a contract for sewer, water, storm, and street improvement, district number 1332, Westview Fourth Edition. Mr. Scott?
Thank you again, Commissioner President Dardis and members of the commission. Westview Fourth Edition, it's a, um, commercial office development that has been before you, uh, on a, on a couple of different previous items. Uh, we opened bids. The, uh, bid market was, uh, pretty competitive. Unfortunately, that, that last item only had one bidder, whereas this one, um, we did see five bidders, um, and, uh, the other, uh, good news was that the average bid was approximately $680,000. The engineer's estimate was, um, as you can see here, $709,500. So we're getting competitive bids and they're, uh, relatively close to our engineer's estimate, making us more comfortable to move forward with a recommendation to award a bid. So with that, I am recommending awarding the contract to Dirt Dynamics, who was the low bidder, uh, in the amount of $588,529.20. With that, questions?
I, I have a question on this one. Is it 25% contingency on this? That seems a little high.
Let me, oh, okay, so, the, when we put together an engineer's report for the developer, uh, the development, uh, this was, I forget the date, back on June 20, or July 20th, we brought forward an engineer's report. And at that time, we were relatively early in, in the, in the planning and design process. And so just to have a, a decent budget, we had not only a, a construction cost, but we also put in 25% contingencies just, uh, to help with the unknowns. At that time, we didn't have the project fully designed. We had just started working on that. So as the project starts, uh, to move forward, after the engineer's report, we get more detailed design. As you can see, um, in this recommendation letter from more engineering, so the engineer's opinion of cost at the engineer's report was, included 25% contingencies, however, the final engineer's estimate only had 10% contingencies. So by the time we got to advertising the bids, the level of effort with the design had increased. We knew more about the project, so we reduced the contingencies from 25% down to 10%. Now, at this point, um, the contractor's bid does not include contingency items. So what the contractor has bid, there are no contingencies in here. Where there is still a contingency number at play is, again, just for the city's budget. So where the, I have now put together an engineer's statement of cost after these bids, I do still have a contingency in here, but again, this is purely for a budgeting purpose. It's not tied to the contractor's bid. So the contractor is still, at this point, gonna be on the hook for their $588,000 price, if that's making sense. So again, for, for the city's budget, we're estimating a total project cost here that includes some contingency, but again, the, the contractor, if we award this to Dirt Dynamics, they don't have a contingency to just use with. If there's a change on the project, it is only administratively allowed through a change order process by which, um, Tina has the authority, authority to sign up to a certain value. The commission reviews them once they hit a, a certain threshold, so.
Thank you.
Additional questions for Mr. Scott on, uh, Street Improvement District, Sewer, Water, Storm, and Street Improvement District 1332, Westview Fourth Edition?
Commissioner Olson, I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Simmons, second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the, and award the contract for the Sewer, Water, Storm, and Street Improvement District number 1332, Westview Fourth Edition. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item number 11 is to review the bids and award a contract for the Sewer, Water, Storm, and Street Improvement District 1334, 9th Avenue Northeast and 5th to 7th Street. Mr. Scott?
Thank you, Commissioner President Dardis, members of the commission. So this, this is the, uh, development where, um, we actually did have the developer come before the commission with the other, with the previous action items. So when we created a district, reviewed an engineer's report, and authorized the plans and specs, that was the developer standing before you. Um, this is also the specific, uh, area where there is a, one other property within this assessment boundary. Um, that property owner did also, um, acknowledge to the commission at the previous meeting that he was comfortable moving forward with the project, even though we were estimating about a $200,000 assessment onto his property. So, uh, again, just familiarizing the commission with which, uh, project this is. Again, we opened bids and it was another good turnout from the, the bidding community. We had seven bidders on this project. We, um, had an average bid price of about $800,000 and the engineer's estimate at the time of, of the bids was $841,500. So again, a really close margin there. So, uh, at this point, we are recommending awarding a contract to Paris Contracting for their bid of $700,271.54. With that, I will answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Questions for Mr. Scott?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner George. Is there a second, please?
This is Commissioner Jurdavich, I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Jurdavich. It's been moved and seconded to approve, uh, awarding the contract for the Sewer, Water, Storm, and Street Improvement District 1334, 9th Street Avenue Northeast and 5th to 7th Street. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 12 is a request approval to donate a flag pole and flag to the city of West Fargo. Epic Management. Good evening, welcome.
Hi, Mackenzie Olson with Epic Management. Um, I assume you have in your packet a letter from us, I think, essentially, um, stating we'd like to donate the flag pole that's located, uh, at the lights to the city of West Fargo. And the flag pole would be located just west of the parking ramp. Any questions or anything I can answer?
How tall is it, Ms. Olson? How, how big a pole?
I do not know that. I do not know a standard, um, no. I know what's in there for a second. I'll let you know in one second here.
It, this is Commissioner Jurdavich. It's 80 feet tall, which might not be the standard, but that's what this document shows.
Yep, and in your packet, you have, um, a drawing of how it looks and how it would display. Planning and zoning has reviewed it and have no issues with it. I think you said 80.
80 feet.
Yep.
Mr. Shockley, is there any issues with an 80-foot structure with where the airport is located in relationship to the lights or anything like that?
I don't believe it, because of the impact of the, of the, it wouldn't be, uh, airport, larger airports have A and B zoning and I don't believe ours has to be.
It's not in line with the approach corridors on either the airport.
Is it not for the West Fargo?
Uh-uh.
Nope, okay. Well, we'll rely on our resident pilot to give us advice on that.
Mr. Mayor, this is Commissioner Jurdavich. I do have one or two quick questions.
Please.
Um, first off, how far away from the parking structure is the flag pole on the drawing? Because my concern is it looks very close and a flag on an 80-foot flag pole, that half staff would literally be blowing into the parking structure. If, just by looking at the drawings anyways.
I don't know that answer off the top of my head, but I can definitely find out. I, our architect and a few other engineers have looked into this to make sure that, you know, we wouldn't want that to be the case, so, um, I can-
It just looks like it's within 30 feet and if the flag, um, in the drawing is proper dimensions, it's a 30-foot flag in length, um, and it would be potentially, that, that would just be obviously undesirable. The second question is, are we planning to light the flag?
The flag would have to be lit in order to be left up, otherwise it would have to be taken down every evening.
That is correct.
Correct, and I guess my question there, or my, my secondary question is, how close are their neighbors and have we thought about the impacts of, I mean, there'd have to be some pretty bright lights to, uh, light up a flag on an 80-foot flag pole. So I just think there's a couple of considerations there, otherwise it's a great idea.
Commissioner Jurdavich, uh, large light poles like this are lit from the ground upward on it. It would, it would be at its base. It wouldn't come off the parking structure. There wouldn't be, uh, structures to illuminate just the flag. It comes from the ground up.
So it would go straight up in there, it wouldn't go out. Yeah, correct, you're correct, Mayor.
Would there be any maintenance costs to be into, uh, consideration in the future with this that would be a factor?
My understanding from the discussion that I had when they first sent the request was that, um, they would cover maintenance and repairs and flag replacement, and so upon approval, we would just wrapped up an agreement to verify that.
I, I would think the big thing would be just the flag and then the lights, which are hooked up to the electrical, but I know, I'm sure, I'm sure we could recall that helped very well.
Yeah.
They've, they've been very good, so.
A, a, a flag of this size has an electronic winch normally in the base of the structure itself and has a rotating truck on the top, so there doesn't get it, I've put up many of these in my career, so, um, if, if they have a standard, uh, uh, flag pole vendor, um, I, I wouldn't be concerned about any of this. If it's a, if it's a handmade one by Mid-America Steel or something, I'd be concerned about it, but, uh, not if it's bought from a contractor that specializes in this.
I think it's great. I don't think it's too often we get companies that wanna come in and donate a, a flag pole and everything, so.
With, could we, if we, if we're ready to move on this, uh, could we have, uh, one caveat to the motion, please? And that is that, to Commissioner Jurdavich's point, to make sure that the flag isn't going to, uh, be snapping on our parking ramp there and buffing on there, that there's plenty of clearance, please.
I would make that motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner George moves, it's been moved and seconded to approve the, the donated flag pole and flag to the city of West Fargo and an 80-foot structure to be located, uh, near the parking ramp at the lights, uh, and that, uh, Epic Companies will look into the size of the flag to make sure that it doesn't buff against our parking ramp. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Please pass, please pass on our thanks to Epic.
Yes.
Ms. Olson, thank you. Item number 13 is a request approval and purchase of an apparatus. Chief Dan Fuller, Mayor Chief for the city of West Fargo.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor and, and Commissioners. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, perfect. Uh, tonight, the item I have before you is a request for, uh, purchase of a replacement apparatus. Uh, we have one heavy rescue truck in town, um, because they're so specialized, we only, we only really need one. Um, the current truck we have is a 2002 heavy rescue. Um, the lifespan that we have identified, uh, for that apparatus is of 15 years, um, because this apparatus was, uh, it was used back when the, the department was not as, as busy as we are today. Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner George, could you, do I need to speak up or?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Oh, okay, okay, sorry. I thought I caught something. Uh, so, uh, because this apparatus is so, uh, has been around for, for a while here, the, its early years weren't really heavy used, uh, but the last, uh, eight years have been. So we were able to extend its life to 20 years. We did look at a replacement, or, or, I'm sorry, a, uh, refurbishment of this apparatus. Uh, it would, it would only get us a few more years. The cost would be, um, not really, uh, worthwhile, uh, compared to purchasing a new apparatus. Uh, the request here is for a 2021 Pierce Heavy Rescue for a base price of $1,47,789. It's reduced to an actual cost of $1,2,937 after, uh, discounts are applied from the dealer if we prepay before the order, or prepay at the time of order. Um, we did specify this apparatus, um, using the Sourcewell, uh, Government Procurement Program, uh, which allows us to go after the apparatus that we want without having to have, uh, a large open bid process. Um, the policy analysis on this is that we, we, uh, Goal 11 in our strategic plan outlines the creation of a policy, uh, for replacement apparatus to include years on frontline, reserve status, and replacement. Again, this is a 15-year unit. We, we are up against the 20-year mark. Um, the financial impact of this would be an interloan from the Capital Improvement Sales Tax Fund, uh, which does have an unencumbered balance enough to cover the purchase cost. Uh, we would be doing a, a loan back to that program, or, or loan back from the FIRE Fund to that fund at 3%. Uh, we did investigate a lease program. Um, it's fractionally, um, less than the 3%, however, that 3% would be money that we would keep and would go back into our account, um, so, uh, and I have on here, it would begin in November 21. I was misspoken on that. We would, it would begin in the 2022 budget, January 2022. Uh, we do not have the funds for next year's budget, uh, in here, and this is an out-of-budget cycle, uh, request, and, and most of our apparatus requests are gonna be this way because it does take 13 to 14 months to have this apparatus built and delivered to us. Uh, with that, I'll stand for, uh, any questions.
What would be the status of the existing unit?
That's a, a great question, uh, Commissioner President Dardis. What we try to do with these apparatus that have reached the, the, our maximum years where we feel comfortable, um, keeping them, a- after that point, we have two options. We can either sell it to a broker, um, which we'll, we probably could get some value for it, um, but we'll take a cut on their- it, but we'll take a cut on their commission. But what has proven fruitful for us and beneficial for other smaller departments in our neck of the woods is that we would put that truck out for a bid, closed bid, and sell it to the highest bidder. Some of these smaller departments that might not use it as much as we do, however, they could probably squeeze another five or six years out of an apparatus like this and for a small investment on their part, it would go a long way to help them. That would be my recommendation, that we'd look locally to sell it before we send it out to a broker.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Any additional questions for the Chief?
I just have a quick comment. Being that this wasn't originally budgeted for with twenty-twenty-one, I really appreciate that Jim included the financial dashboard into this because then we could see exactly what's in that capital improvement fund to know that we can look there and be like, yep, no problem, so, uh, I, I think I definitely support it based on those things, so.
Thank you, Commissioner George. Additional questions or comments from the Commissioners? I'll make motion to approve. Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. Been moved to approve the purchase of this apparatus. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner George, second. Been moved and seconded to approve the purchase of this, uh, fire truck. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Item number fourteen. Update on the lights, plaza, ice rink and grant. Mr. Larson.
Thank you, Commission President and Commissioners. Tonight, we're here to give you an update on the progress for the plaza as far as the ice rink. That's a project that's been, was a part of the original plan, to put in a rink at the plaza that would allow us to have hockey, whether it's practice, events, or just pleasure. Tonight, we do have Mike Amundson, Executive Director of West Fargo Events here to be able to answer questions in regards to the programming or how it will set up, and so we'd be glad to, you know, call on him if you have any questions related to that. The total cost of the, for the ice rink is about six hundred and eighty-five thousand. That includes the boards, the glass, the refrigeration chiller, the mats that go underneath the ice, ice skates and other miscellaneous equipment that's needed, also the Zamboni or the Ice Resurfacer. There are other brands than a Zamboni. So this is exciting for us as it allows us to bring a refrigerated sheet into the outdoor component. Most of our outdoor sheets are natural ice, so that means when it gets warm out or the sun comes out, they melt and they're very difficult and they're not very user-friendly. And it also shortens up the life of when we're able to actually use the ice. The quality of ice also is suspect. You end up with dry spots and holes. Yes, my past history in a park district is coming through here. We have, did struggle with this, so I'm excited to see this. As a part of trying to cover the cost of this, while we do have the funds available in our Tiff District, West Fargo Events did approach the CBB on behalf of the city of West Fargo to see if they would consider providing a grant towards this project. That grant was approved contingent on the city of West Fargo approving that and accepting it. So that, that is a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars that the Tiff project does not have to pay for this, for the ice component of it. At this time, I'll be glad to answer any questions related to this grant or the ice arena component of the plaza.
Questions from Mr. Larson, please.
I have a question. I think it's on the panel, there was at least one, if not two, park board members listed. Has the park board, have they talked about contributing anything to this at all?
The park board has not suggested any contribution to this project.
Are we going to be speaking with them or are they just not?
At this time, I don't think they've been a part of the project and our city administrator could probably answer that question better.
Thank you for your question, Commissioner George. To date, they have not been involved in the project at all. I'm not sure what their interests would be, but I did reach out to their director, Barb, I can never say her last name.
Rob Stausser.
Yes, Rob Stausser, just to talk to her about their future plans and thoughts and just kind of keep her pointed on what we're up to over here, so I will be talking with her.
Okay, cool.
Commissioner George? Please, Commissioner Simmons.
Thank you, Tina. She is on our board as well.
Okay.
And if you're looking in your packet, there's a recommendation from her for doing this and moving forward. We work really good with both the park board and the school district.
Okay.
So she's definitely on board. The problem, some of the problem with them is, like everybody else, money. So they do a lot of in-kind things for us rather than cash. They do in-kind work such as sweeping off the ice rink downtown and then probably this one is, you know, so they help us out with in-kind donations rather than just strictly cash.
Okay.
Which you'll see in your packet, a great letter from her, so.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Simmons and myself were at the presentation to the Convention and Visitors Bureau along with Mr. Amundson. He did a fantastic job in presenting it to them and we were awarded the grant within a few hours after Mr. Amundson's presentation, so, um, well done. I might note, and Commissioner Simmons is aware of this also as Mr. Amundson is, is that the school district has been a part of this also because of our board members. And, uh, Mr. Amundson, would you step to the microphone, please? And would you share with him about, uh, the dialogue that's ongoing for Hockey Day in North Dakota?
Yes, Mike Amundson, Executive Director of West Fargo Events. We have received, uh, within the last two weeks, a commitment from Hockey Day North Dakota to move their event from Jamestown to West Fargo. This is the first time that the event has ever left Jamestown since it was begun and we're very excited to host it and the, uh, the ice rink and the excitement around the lights and all of the technological capabilities that the lights possess is the main driver behind them wanting to entertain moving their event to West Fargo. It will not be a permanent move, but we're very excited to be the first community to host it outside of Jamestown.
Thank you, Mr. Amundson. Additional questions from Mr. Larson or Mr. Amundson, Commissioners?
This is Commissioner Olson. If the ice rink was part of the grand plan, um, which I'm in favor of, I'm just curious, why wasn't the electrical power and all that all made part of the original bid of the plaza? The construction at that point, will there be any disruption, ripping up of existing infrastructure already to install this additional power sources?
Mr. Olson, Mr. Amundson's going to address your question.
The initial plan for this plaza didn't include, um, a chilling system and having the capabilities that we're talking about right now. We also did not know what the future power requirements were going to be. When we spoke with the company that will be supplying the chiller that we are ordering, it's a two-hundred-and-ten-ton chiller that's going to have a significant draw compared to what a concert would draw from that parking ramp power.
Thank you.
Additional questions for Mr. Amundson or Mr. Larson?
Just one comment, Mayor.
Please, Commissioner Simmons.
I'll just make another comment. As the Mayor alluded to earlier, the CBB did not take long to make their decision. The light bulb came on. They saw what the potential is at the lights. They saw the motels filling up, the restaurants filling up. This is a metro-wide area. When you bring North Dakota hockey to West Fargo, it's metro-wide. It's just not West Fargo. So this is a huge, huge event for us and a great starting point with COVID and everything that's going on. I don't think we could have asked for much more than that. Thanks.
Thank you. Additional comments, questions?
Just one more quick question. Have we talked to private entities at all about providing sponsorships for this?
We will be approaching many local businesses and foundations for some additional financial help.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner, or, excuse me, Mr. Larson.
I've been elevated. Thank you. I'd like also, there are some terms that I'd like to just kind of paraphrase and review here for you. The CBB Board will provide the hundred and seventy-one thousand four-seventy capital grant to the city of West Fargo, which represents twenty-five percent of the cost to purchasing of the mat chillers, boards, glass and full-size outdoor hockey rink in the plaza at the lights at Cheyenne. The grant will be payable in installments of eighty-five thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollars the fiscal year and the same amount in the CBB's fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two. Contingent upon receipt of a review of West Fargo Events' financials for the last two years or three if available, so we would have to get them from them. A West Fargo, a West Fargo City Commission vote providing financial support of the project and recognizing that the city is responsible for the continuing operation and management of the ice arena at the facility. Recognition of the CBB contribution on a dasher board during the skating season and one other year-round location. And assurance that the equipment will be owned by the city of West Fargo. The first grant payment will be made in the first FM CBB check run following the completion of this agreement and completion of the contingencies above. The city of West Fargo and its management contractor, West Fargo Events, agree to adhere to the requirements included in Section C of the attached capital grant guidelines, which are a standard process. So it does lay out when the cash would come. We'd get the first eighty-five thousand and then we'd have to, we'd get the other eighty-five thousand. We would be able to use funds from the Tiff to be able to cash flow that and then reimburse those funds for future capital of the project. So as a staff, we do not see any difficulties complying with the request of the CBB.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Any additional questions from the Commissioners?
Jim, were those contingencies put in the packet?
They were not. I apologize for that. I just received this letter late Friday night.
Additional questions? This is an actionable item. We have to accept the grant from, as a city commission.
I'd be more than happy to make that motion to accept the grant.
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner George, second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the Convention and Visitors Bureau grant for the ice equipment for the lights. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Thank you, Mr. Amundson. Commissioner George has requested a short break. Five minutes, please.
I'm okay with that, too.
Okay.
I, I asked her ten minutes ago. Did you give me?
So where's your crystal ball if you do the goddamn Amazon? We can hear everything there in the commission chambers.
Okay.
Yes, have a good evening.
We convene the October fifth city commission meeting. Item number fifteen. Mrs. Fisk.
Good evening, Commission President and Commissioners. I wanted to bring this before you. I've worked for the city for ten years and as far back even before that as I can find. The Special Assessment Committee has been paid forty dollars per assessment district for the work that they do. We have changed over time and it's become considerably more work. Let me make this clear, this request is not coming from them. This is a suggestion from me. I would like for you to consider changing that rate from forty dollars in assessment district to a hundred dollars in assessment district.
Per district or per meeting?
Per district. It's per district. Can you clarify what that means? What that means is we just approved eight districts, so they would get paid eight hundred dollars each. So a hundred dollars per district for the work that they put into the process. Right now, they get forty dollars a district.
That's, that's quite a jump.
Yeah, it seems really high.
What, um?
That's per individual times three.
That's per individual times three.
See, what, what kind of time do they, I mean, I, I agree with you, they haven't, I don't ever recall them getting a raise.
No.
So, but what kind of, what kind of time, how much time do they put in on each district? I have no clue. I mean, it's a lot of work, I know that.
The number of meetings has changed based on everything that's happening with special assessments and so on and so forth, and I would say in the past, their initial meeting was maybe...
And I can jump in.
Yep.
Historically, before, they probably had, each meeting, they probably spent two to three meetings on each district and it's probably half an hour for each district, but now with the new processes that the city has adopted with more information, we present a lot of information to the special assessment district. I think they're running about an hour per district per meeting, so it's two or three hours for each district that it's before the special assessment commission. Some are more than that. There's some complexity with some of the larger districts, some of the smaller ones, there's less, but if you were to average it, it was probably an hour per meeting, uh, per district this time, especially the first couple of meetings. We just spent so much time going video, did some videos, some pictures, explanation from the engineer what the costs were, went over the formula, I mean, there's, there's, there's a lot of time they spend on it.
I, I guess, well, here's my opinion is, um, I'm not saying it shouldn't be compensated because that's fine, but it's also a public service position. I mean, what we do as Commissioners, we spend a ton of time and I guarantee we're not compensated hardly anything for what we do, so I guess I would almost feel anybody in that position, it's not their full I don't know. 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 Can you justify it more, Tina? I mean, you know, can you give us a little more information?
I just looked at the amount of time and the change that's taken place and the fact that they have not ever had a change. I bet if you went back to Mike McLeod, it was forty dollars in assessment district. I really didn't have a factual basis for that, other than it just seemed like a number that was a little closer to some of the effort, the effort that they're having to make and the things they're having to put up with. I mean, they do also, like you receive a lot of calls, they receive a lot of, you know, there's a lot of time that they put into it, and it just, and they only meet maybe once a year, so it's not like once every two years sometimes, and it'll be even less. But what we're requiring of them has gotten to be much more than what we expected before. So that's the reason that I went more than double.
Do you think that's going to grow? You know, I mean, more and more, I'm thinking more responsibility is going to be put on them as we move, maybe hopefully less assessments, right? But more detail, I guess is where I'm going with this, more detail work?
Good point, Commissioner Simmons. The way that the public has come out is that they want more information, and they keep wanting more and more and more. So I do believe that their job is very complicated, like yours, and that they need to be on top of what's going on and why everything is being done the way it is, and be prepared to answer a lot of questions, just like you do.
Like you said, I would recommend, like, some sort of compromise figure, six, five, seventy-five, somewhere.
How about the other two guys? Are they still with us? Commissioner Olson and Jurgelberg?
Yeah, I'm still here. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, this is Commissioner Olson. I will make the motion to approve our administrator's recommendation of a hundred dollars per district, because it is complicated work, and there's a lot of pressure put on them, and I believe it's justified.
I would be willing to make a second on that.
Commissioner Olson moves. Commissioner Jurdavig seconds to approve raising the special assessment committee's compensation to one hundred dollars per special assessment district. Is there any further discussion?
I would just mention, if I could, that I'm not comfortable going that high. You know, I would be willing to double it to eighty dollars. So, you know, ahead of time, I guess, but...
I would agree. I won't vote yes for a hundred, but a compromise, I would.
Is there any further discussion? We have a motion for one hundred dollar hearing. Then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye.
Aye.
It fails on a three to two vote?
So I'll go bring back to the table, Mayor, if I could. I would make a motion that we give them eighty dollars.
Been moved for an eighty-dollar compensation for the special assessment commission per special assessment district. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner George seconds. Been moved and seconded to approve an eighty-dollar fee per special assessment district or the special assessment commission. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Item number sixteen is a request of approval for one of the four options presented by Mr. Anvik of Public Works for a sump pump ordinance eleven sixty. Mr. Anvik.
Good evening, Commissioner President and Commissioners. Coming back before you with the sump pump ordinance eleven sixty for revision, I brought this about a month ago up, and it was tabled, and you guys tasked me with coming up with some more options and just bringing the one back. So I bring four options labeled A, B, C, and D. Two are new and two are kind of older ones. I'll just kind of hit the high points for right now. Our first option, A, all waivers will be granted after the adoption of this ordinance. We'll automatically renew annually. Currently, with the ordinance, you have to sign up every year for the program. This way, once you sign up now, say this fall, after this was approved, you would automatically be on there and re-enrolled every year until you opted out with the waiver. The annual fee is still being filled out monthly. It's an annual fee that will be billed out monthly to the residents. It's a fee that is set by a resolution from the commission. As a staff, we'd recommend an annual fee of sixty dollars. That would be billed out as five dollars per month. All new houses built after the adoption of this ordinance would automatically be enrolled in the program unless, say, the homeowner or the builder signs a waiver stating there is no connection to the sewer in the home. There would also be a thousand-dollar fine for anyone caught violating this ordinance. We did have some, you know, recommendations in the past about looking back, you know, to anyone that has been on the program in the past and just automatically enrolling them. As staff, we felt that we would rather just start over from the beginning, and then if this option, say, was adopted, we would go back and kind of do a, almost like a PR campaign and go back and anybody that had been on the program before would get a letter stating what they could do and what kind of outline the new program as well.
Do you have any idea how many people are on that program in the city right now?
Currently, about nine hundred and sixty.
Nine hundred and sixty?
Yeah, that's the last time I'd heard. And I know this is option A, but this is kind of the option that we're kind of recommending as staff as the choice to be approved. Option B is just kind of taking the old existing ordinance and removing two sections, section four and five. One, section four, was just the appeals section, and section five basically said that the city employees will go into each house and shut the valves off and put a seal on there during the fall and spring. This would kind of clean up the current ordinance, as we don't have the employees to go into everyone's house, nor do we want to. This would just be a small change from the current one that we have, but we would still do it where you would sign up every year for this process. Option C was the ordinance I had brought forward earlier. This was the only version that we could come up with that would fully capture everybody that would be on the program, but it didn't have very much public support for that, and we would require everybody to sign a waiver to opt out of the program. And then I just left option D as the current ordinance. If you wanted to leave it as is, we could just go with option D and stay with the current ordinance. I'll open up now for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Anvik. Is there any questions from the commission? Mr. George?
I'll just say I'm kind of impressed with A, because you took what everybody was saying, the residents, the commission staff, you took what everybody was saying, you made something that works, and I'm kind of surprised. I didn't expect that. So I think I'm pretty impressed with A and what you came up with there.
In reviewing the four options, I would agree with Commissioner George that A is, I do have a problem with the thousand-dollar fine, yes. I would much prefer, you know, a warning, first warnings, X number of dollars, whatever. If they continue to violate, then absolutely could get there, but I think we, I can't vote for it, is it's written right now with a thousand-dollar fine, you know?
I have a question.
Commissioner Simmons?
Thank you. Two, actually. First one's a question. So my house is a good example. I have no idea in the world what the heck I got in there. I know I got all these pipes, and I know some run both ways. Are you guys going to come out and tell me which ones I need to shut down, which ones I don't, or are you going to make me hire somebody to come out?
No, and with this, and, you know, with the thousand-dollar fine, we would have to actually, during the, say, the summer months where you would not wanting to be into the sewer system, would have to actually catch somebody doing that, which would be somewhat difficult to do, to do that. But, I mean, it'd be if we just happen to have somebody in the house who are changing a meter, or if there was an inspection of some sort.
So here's the deal, that's what I'm saying. I don't even care. At this point, I'm not talking the fine. I'm just talking, Matt, about having somebody come out. When you hire somebody to come out there, you know, whoever it is, they charge you big bucks nowadays. So for someone to even come out and tell me whether mine, do I got it turned on, do I got it turned off? I have no guidelines. When I bought the house, it was there, and that's the way it was.
Right.
I'm assuming there's a lot of people like me that probably have that type of setup. So if I call the city of West Fargo, whether one of these goes through and say, hey, I need some help determining which one I'm supposed to turn on and off, are your folks going to come out and do that? Are you going to tell me to call whoever?
Right now, we could probably walk you through it, but I don't know if we would have the staff to be able to do that.
So that's my other concern, because there's another fee we're going to be putting on homeowners that are in my situation.
I just have a question.
Commissioner Olson.
To Commissioner Simmons, when you turn the valve one way or the other, does the sump pump discharge to the outside? Do you know where it's going?
You know what? Commissioner Olson, it does it with mine. It may sound silly, but I'm above the river, so I have no water in my sump pump ever anyway. So I've never touched them in the fifteen years I've been there. Never, I don't even know. I got all kinds of gadgets down there that, fortunately for me, I don't have to worry about it, because I'm on the river and I'm above the river, so.
Yeah, and this is still what, say, option A, what we're saying is still strictly voluntary to sign up for it. And if you, you know, if you're not using your sump pump or have one and are not using it, like you say, you are by the river like that, there would really be, you know, I guess that really wouldn't affect you with this ordinance.
Then I will make my one comment, and that is, number one, I agree with the mayor. I won't support anything about a thousand dollars. That's way too much right away. But the second thing is, I do like the old, just the way we have it. You know, right now with COVID, what we've gone through, with all the increases we've had, going through different, you know, now we're going to throw another one on the homeowner. I just, I think we can wait a year. I don't think it's going to kill us. I think, as I mentioned earlier, let's look at where we're leaking in places like we just found here a while back in the, you know, in the trailer park. We've got a lot of more issues, I think, than just trying to go after the homeowner. And I realize that's not what you're trying to do, Matt, I get it. But that's what it's, that's kind of what it's coming down to, five dollars here, five dollars there. That all adds up and it's starting to add up, especially with our water rates and our sewer just went up.
Right.
And I'm getting that bill now for the second time and it's twenty-five bucks more than ever. And I realize, I get it, that's part of the, that's part of it, living in the city, doing that. But I, I just don't think this is an issue. I, I'm just not that concerned to, that we need to move right away on this.
Right, I mean, we are, you know, I mean, part of this is we're looking at our I and I going to, you know, the city of Fargo as we're putting through the wastewater and every gallon goes through, we will be getting charged for that. Um, our current, um, the current more, uh, cost of the current one now is fifty dollars annually. We were just suggesting that that bumped to sixty, which is ten dollars uh, annually. Uh, but that is just a recommendation because it is set by a resolution by the commission.
So Mark, you're looking at option D with, uh, to revisit this in a year? Is that kind of what you're thinking?
Pardon me?
You're looking at option D, current ordinance, but they may be revising.
I'm just looking at leaving a load for this year and let's look at it next year.
You do bring up a good point with the recent water and sewer rate increase.
I mean, we, we're going to nickel, we're going to nickel and dime and I hate to use those words, but we're going to hit them again. And I, I realize at this point we have to. I just don't, I think there's other places we can look into our sewer lines where I know we've got a lot of problems, as you do. And we can concentrate more focus on that rather than focus having people, because they're going to call you. They're going to say, just like I am, hey, can you come out and take a look at this? And I, I just don't think, I don't think this is a huge issue, at least on my agenda right now. I'd rather have you focus on finding where all the water is missing.
Right, and we, this is just a starting point for that. Uh, and this is, you know, as a staff, cheapest route. Uh, if we go with option A, because currently, right now, it takes our, our office staff quite a bit of time every year to go through and sign up nine hundred and sixty people for this. This kind of cleans that up where we don't have to do that, you know, as well. It would just be an, an annual rollover fee as well. And part of this is the people that are paying for this are the ones that are using it. It's not anybody else, that's.
This might clean up the paperwork side of it, Matt, but I don't see this cleaning up the citizen side at all. They're going to be calling you more than ever, wondering what's going on and what am I supposed, you know? You, you're not cleaning anything up there, you're getting more calls, in my opinion.
So, this is Commissioner Jervig. If I could just throw in a, a thought along about those lines, Mark. As somebody who pays this fee, I would actually rather have it hit my utility bill as five dollars a month than have to remember to contact the city and pay something sort of out of, out of the normal process on an annual basis like I'm supposed to do today. I mean, this, so, so if we don't want to raise the rate, we could make it a fifty dollar fee, but still allow it to be invoiced out on a monthly basis so that people, when they sign up, it, it's just, that's the easy button going forward. Because right now, it's actually kind of a pain in the butt for everybody that who pays this fee to have to administer it on an annual basis.
And, and Commissioner Jervig, the, the fee isn't my issue, the sixty dollars. The issue is, is that you have to opt out of that and that's going to be very confusing for people as well. There, you, we're talking about automatically billing them here. There, you have to literally call in or fill out a, an application to opt out of this. That's my biggest, that's my concern, not the sixty dollars, you know?
Yeah. Well, I, I just have a comment too. This is Commissioner Olson, you know, you, you go, anybody goes on to a website and they all of a sudden they get all of these uh, emails and you have to opt out or unsubscribe from that. What's the difference of doing that versus doing this one time? I don't see a big hardship on our citizens to, to opt out of this one time. Um, and I don't see a, a, a big uh, uh, hindrance on the sixty dollar annual fee uh, billed out on a, on a, five dollars per month. That's one Starbucks coffee, you know, less a month. And uh, we're having to pay for every dine, every gallon that goes to, to Fargo to be treated, which previous commissions decided this is the, the cheapest way for us to go. Had we built our own wastewater treatment plant, we'd be paying a lot more than five dollars a month extra to, to treat our own water. So I don't have a problem with, with option A at all.
Mrs. Fisk?
Yes, um, I wanted to reiterate something that Matt had commented on. The staff time in his department is huge, but also you come over to the city hall side and every single year we have to, our staff, the finance staff has to accumulate all those forms and manually put that charge in there. And it takes up a lot of time. And again, as Commissioner Jervig said, a lot of people don't remember to do it. So if they just don't think of it or they don't see it, or you don't look at your bill that close because you get it emailed, they don't mean to not pay, they just aren't paying. And so the, the thought behind it is if it's, if you don't want to raise it up to five dollars a month, leave it at four dollars a month and then it's forty-eight dollars and it's two dollars cheaper than what they're paying right now.
You're all missing my point. My point is about the four, or five, or six, or even seven dollars a month. It's about opting out. It's about part of the, the process that we go through that now everybody's got to call in. It's going to be confusing. I, and again, you, you know, that's just my opinion. So as far as Commissioner Olson, as far as the Starbucks go, there are a lot of people that can't afford Starbucks, by the way. So, you know, there are a lot of people in town right now can't afford to feed their kids. And I don't want to get into that with you, but my point is this, not everybody just has the money to pay the bills. It, it's just not that easy, so, but I'll quit, go on.
With, with option A, to the best of my understanding, um, somebody like me who it discharges in my yard all the time, I wouldn't have to opt out because I'm not, I wouldn't have to do anything.
Yep, once you, once you signed up, yeah, once you signed up for this, we would make sure that when you signed up, you would know that you would have to opt out. General homeowners that are not using this would not have to opt out.
So, okay, so I'm misunderstanding part of that, that you're saying that you're going to tell me, right? That I have to opt out, you're going to let me know or I don't have to opt out?
You don't have to even, if you don't have this, you don't even have to sign up for it. So there's nothing the general homeowner has to do. If you were a part, if you sign up for this program.
Oh, so, okay, so.
Yeah, it's only if you sign up for the program where you will have to opt out.
Different from what we talked about earlier.
Correct.
I see what you're saying.
And that, that's why, that's what we want to get, that was part of this is.
That's my confusion, I'm sorry. I, I'm assuming you're hooking everybody up.
No.
If you're not, okay.
We're not, no.
Then, then it doesn't matter.
It, it's, it's one, it's just the people that are using it that would have to opt out.
You need to explain that to me, yeah.
Okay.
I'm okay, thank you.
No. And, and one quote, comment that we did on why we went for the thousand dollar fine on this is because it is voluntary and, and to do that, um, it was just kind of the, you want to set that fine high enough that people would want, you know, you have to have a little bit of a, a fear factor in there that they might get caught to actually want to do it. Because right now, we probably are not even twenty-five percent of the people that are actually running their, their sump pumps into the law, into the sewer during the winter. Some of it is the fact that they probably had signed up at one point and still think, you know, that they, they didn't understand that they had to do it every year. Whereas this, it'll just keep rolling over and that's why we're trying to kind of take that out. Um, but that's why we kind of went with that higher fine. I mean, if that's the direction, we could go lower if we wanted to. Uh, but we wanted to set it at that point, um, just to kind of have that bar to have people saying, okay, this could happen. So, um, it's cheaper to pay the, the five dollars a month than it is to pay a thousand dollar fine.
And this is part of option A, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Any additional questions for Mr. Anvik? All right, thank you, sir. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I think, um, after listening to everybody's comments and everything, I think I'm back to supporting A and I would like to make a motion to approve option A.
As written.
As written.
There's a fine in there?
Okay, well, all right. If that's going to be a sticking point, then can we make an option to reduce the fine? Do we want to state that five hundred or a warning and then five hundred? Or do we want to do something like that?
Commissioner George, if your motion was to change it to a five hundred dollar fine, I would be more than happy to second that.
Commissioner George?
Okay. Um, what, what the motion would, I'm sorry to interrupt, but what the motion would have to be is to um, have direct Matt to work with um, our attorney, John Shockley, to write the ordinance that would then be brought back to you. So however you do the formula of it, that's what it would be.
Okay. How do you guys feel about five hundred?
I just think that's a, I just think that's a, that's a lot too, coming out of the chute.
We do have a motion in a second and the motion is uh, amended to five hundred.
Okay, five, uh, five hundred, as written, except five hundred as the fine.
So now we'll have a discussion, Mr. Simmons.
I still think that's a lot of money for the first, for the first shot. Are we going to give any warnings on this? Are we gonna, I mean, can we do a, uh, can we do a, like a one hundred dollars, two hundred and then three, you know what? Or one hundred then to a four, you know what I'm saying, some type of?
Yeah, I mean, in all likelihood, the first time would probably be a warning anyway. You know, I mean, that's something we're looking out for residents as well too. I mean, we don't want to do this. If we did see something, more than likely, it would be a warning. Um, and then we'll just maybe keep an eye on it. And sometimes it, it's not so much the fine, it's just education as well.
We have to have it in there though.
I, we would, I would, personally, I'd like to have it in there so we can go back onto it because we can add it in later.
Some teeth.
Yeah, so you have some teeth to it, but, you know, as we were doing it, we're still going to look out for the residents as well.
What's the mechanism of how we're going to communicate this to the public? You, you've been in contact or conversation with communications? Um, how, how are we going to make sure that the public, this is a transparent and the public is?
For one, uh, we have been in communication with um, the communications department. Um, we've worked with Addy in the past on this. Um, one, we'd probably get it on social media websites. And then two, we probably, I don't, we talked with Jim about doing mailers to people who have in the past go through the, to the back, who have had this um, waiver in the past.
So those people that are receiving city invoices for water, sewer will have an insert?
They would have a filling insert in there too.
Notification?
Yeah.
Again, the motion is that we direct the city attorney to develop a ordinance with regard to sump pumps. And uh, as item A of your recommendations with a limitation of a five hundred dollar fine. Is there any further discussion?
We can't change or ask Matt need to change the motion or anything like that?
Well.
Can I have that discussion?
Mr. Shockley's going to take direction from us. So we can add, you can add anything you want to is, is, is what you want to do in the discussion here.
Okay.
Because we're not going to have a final document, it's going to come back to us and then we approve it. But, so it's just giving Mr. Shockley direction. So if you have something that you think of tomorrow or the next day, reach out to him.
Well, the only thing, thank you mayor, the only thing that I would, I guess I would like to see or, or do is something more like the first time a hundred dollars than the second time five hundred. And you know what, if they don't get it the first time, shame on them, they'll know. But at least we don't, I mean.
Yeah, I'm totally fine with that.
Yeah.
I do have one question.
Commissioner Jervig?
Miss, Commissioner Olson?
Yeah, I want to talk to Commissioner Jervig first. I have to, I have to get approval of a second to change it to what Mr., so, Mr. Jervig, do you approve? As the second of the motion, do you approve that change?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. And as the maker of the motion, do you approve that change?
I approve that change.
All right, then we're all right. Now, Commissioner Olson?
I just have one question. Um, will there be a, a period of time listed in the ordinance when it's permissible to discharge into the sanitary system?
Yes, sir, well, um, currently it's November first through April first. Um, I think in the last time I brought it up, Commissioner Jervig had mentioned maybe October fifteenth to say April fifteenth, just with the weather we have around here. So we could put in October fifteenth to April fifteenth on this.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Anvik, thank you very much for all the work that you put into this. We greatly appreciate it. Item number seventeen is the construction report, Dustin Scott, city engineer. Mr. Scott?
Thank you again, Commissioner President Dartis and members of the commission. Uh, not much to report tonight. I will uh, let you, let everybody know that the concrete patching project that we have going on uh, right outside our doorstep here on Ninth and Fourth, uh, we hope to open that up tomorrow. The uh, concrete tests have come in pretty well after the third, fourth day. So we hope to open that up tomorrow, uh, keep proceeding with that project. Uh, we do have a couple other developments that have, have started and are progressing nicely. So aside from that, um, open for any questions.
Questions for Mr. Scott?
I have one, mayor.
Please, Commissioner Simmons?
Thank you. And it's probably more, maybe you'll know a bit more Matt here, but in reference over on the west side of town, you're going through actually the sewers now. Are you replacing the, like the concrete or asphalt around the top of the manholes? Or some of them I see with, you know, they're being blocked and, so I'm thinking you're just replacing some of that?
Yeah.
Yes, uh, to answer that question, uh, we're going around and um, doing what we have, they call them Mr. Manhole. Basically a big hole cutter goes around the manhole just to lower them. Um, we had every one of the, the street department goes around and drives their snow, snow roads in the winter. And, and we just want to make sure that we're going to.
Level?
Yeah, just that, so they're level and we're not going to hit them because uh, one, it's kind of hard on equipment and drivers. And then two, if we pop that out when it's January and make a mess in the street, we just really can't replace it. So right now, we have a list of about fifty-two, I think we have to do yet.
Have we, have we found any, um, any problems in them once, when you pulled them open? Like any, you know, like decaying of the, the base or anything?
Um, yes.
Okay.
I mean, with that, I mean, they, they go in and try and do as best they can and kind of sleeve it as, um, from what we can do now, kind of mark it down if we have any issues down the road. We haven't found any major ones, correct, you know, currently. Uh, but we did have uh, about forty-five sinkholes, part of that this, earlier this year that we did fix.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Let's conclude your report, Mr. Scott?
That does, thank you.
Any question, additional questions for Mr. Scott? Thank you, sir. Number eighteen, city administrators' report, Mrs. Fisk?
Thank you, Commissioner President Dartis. I don't have a lot, but I do want to give you a reminder and I know Emily was going to resend out the invitation on Wednesday at, starting at three till five. We're having our first review process for improvements in contract session in the training room. And um, that's for all of you commissioners. And it's just to start going through how the whole process works, more of an education for all of us. So um, John and Dustin will be presenting. And um, it will be noted as a public meeting because we do want the, all the commissioners to attend.
Will, will you send us emails on that as a reminder?
Yep.
Okay, yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisk. Any questions for Mrs. Fisk? Any correspondence for us this evening?
Yes, um, I apologize, I got this sent out late to you, but I did email all of you. We have two emails that we received from, from people um, in relation to the airport. And then um, there was an email that was sent to um, Mayor Dartis, Commissioner Simmons and myself about um, the performance of hairspray at the lights and um, from the FMCT, Fargo Morehead Community Theater and they plan to come back and they're really happy with the venue. So I just, I sent those to you to share. Um, we have a lot to be proud of there, so that's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any commissioner have any non-agenda items?
Other than one team, mayor. Tina, could you send that to the other commissioners as well, that letter from, if they didn't get it or did you?
I, I did.
You did?
Yeah, I remember reading the FMCT one. Yes, thank you.
Any non-agenda items by any commissioner? Does any staff or public have any non-agenda items that they'd like to address this time? All right, seeing none.[1788.98]